Good evening, welcome to the Sunshine Meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is 6:04 on Thursday, July 6, 2017. Roll call, Michelle, please.
Councilwoman Oller, present. Councilwoman Azar, Councilwoman Crossen, present. Councilman Devon, here. Councilman Elliott, here. Councilman Garrison, here. Councilman Morris. Councilman Nassar, present. Councilman Nation. Six are present, three are absent.
If this is your first Sunshine Meeting of our city council, we will not be voting on any items today. We'll be just basically doing a fact-finding mission. If you are here to talk about anything that is not on our agenda, next week would be your opportunity to do so. We have 30 minutes allocated for public comments, then if you'd like to know what's on our agenda for tonight, there's one right behind Mr. Taylor from the Tribune Star on the front row that you can get agenda there. That being said, first order of business, Michelle, please.
Appropriation 3, 2017, $1,283,513 and 2 cents from Lowet Special Fund Number 0257, the services contractual fund worth of $2,000,000, this is previously tabled.
Petitioner to speak on this, please.
Council Eddie Felling, City Attorney, I apologize, my microphone wasn't working. There was a little bit of confusion last month when we discussed this issue. I did some research, pulled up some memoriams that were done by the State Board of Accounts, and dug through the Indiana Code with regard to how these funds should be transferred with regard to paying for the Margaret Avenue project. The appropriation that was before you last month is correct. It will need to go as presented into the, specifically going from the special fund, 257, into the services contractual fund. Once that is complete, we will go back through and re-categorize the expense from that particular fund. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions with regard to State Board of Accounts' statements on this, and any questions about the Indiana Code.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Appropriation 3, 2017? Counsel?
Mayor, I did have a couple of questions that I felt asked last month, if you have The total distribution from the special fund from the state was 1.9 million?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact rest of the dollars.
And I know we discussed this during budget season last year, but how do we allocate the other $750,000 from this fund?
The 75-25 split, 75% went to the road project, and 25% could go to any other government purpose. And so, we looked at two, well, all three funds were ones that needed assistance because of the property tax cap losses. Well, last year they were 10 million, this year they're 11 million. We knew that there were a couple, but we weren't ever going to catch up with. So one is an example of cemeteries. We also put money in parks, and it was because those funds needed the assistance with property tax dollars or income tax dollars. And so, we chose those based on not being able to close the gap with any increased funding in the future, but being able to fill that gap, and we've made two of the three now permanently positive.
Okay, and what were the three again?
Parks, cemeteries, and, I don't think I brought that paper with me, let me think for a second.
And the reason why, I mean, I guess some-
They're all property tax-based funds, and so that's, they needed assistance getting to a positive balance at the end of the year, and then we would be able to maintain that as we move forward. So, two of the three were fixed by those transfers.
And mainly was, you chose accounts that just needed help getting into the positive, or like-
Well, two of the three were easy ones, yeah. One only needed a small amount of money, about $75,000, and that's taking care of cemeteries as we move forward. It'll have a positive balance as we move forward. We narrowed the gap, and we fixed another one. So, I mean, it was basically purely on need.
So what was the argument for just not using 100% towards, I know the law said you could do a 75-25 split, but what would the argument be of just doing a total 100% for road projects? Why wouldn't we do the whole 1.9 for road projects?
Because we've got money in added to do road projects, we don't have property tax dollars to cover our property tax-based funds.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, thanks, Mayor.
Next order of business, please.
General Ordinance 6, 2017, meaning City Code, Chapter 8, Article 1, Section 8, F34, specific maximum speeds, Church Drive, Ferndale Drive, Lakeview Drive, Mayflower Court, Mayflower Drive, and Terra Vista Drive.
Petitioner to speak on this, please.
Council Eddie Felling, City Attorney. I was approached by Councilman Elliott with some concerns from constituents living in Terra Vista with regard to the current speed limits there. I conferred with City Engineer Chuck Ennis with regard to the proposal of moving it from, I believe, a 30 mile an hour to a 25 mile an hour zone. He agreed that that would warrant that in that area due to it being a neighborhood, and a 5 mile an hour difference wouldn't have a profound effect there. So that's what's drafted before you, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on General Ordinance 6, 2017? Go ahead, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Art Western. I live at 231 Terra Vista Drive, one of the streets being named here, and I've come to voice my enthusiastic support for the lowering that speed limit. If I can indulge me just a minute to tell you a little bit about the place. We've lived there for 31 years now, and the places that me and my children used to play ball, lots and fields, are now filled with houses, has become more crowded. The nice thing about that is lots of new families into the neighborhood, and I can look out the window almost any time of the day and see children playing with people walking dogs, carrying their, pushing the children or carrying them in their backpacks down the streets. And a favorite one of mine is to watch them learning how to drive their bicycles down the streets and so forth. So that's a beautiful picture, but when I see that, it also raises my anxiety, because in case you haven't been there, there are no sidewalks in Terra Vista Drive. So all of these kinds of family activities must necessarily occur in the road. And similarly, children playing in their front yard, there is no space, that front yards come right up against the road. And it's my opinion, and Facebook traffic is at all indicative of many, many, many of us in the subdivision, that 30 miles an hour is just not out of the question. And by lowering that to 25, you send an important message that this is not Fruit Ridge, this is not popular, this is a quiet residential neighborhood, slow it down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public that'd like to speak on General Ordinance 6, 2017? Counsel?
Just one thing I want to add, a lot of the streets in that subdivision are curved, you know, it's not a rectangular setup like a lot of the city is. And that also, to me, as I drove each of those streets, just adds to the traffic concern and limited visibility you have in some areas, and also a large number of trees, because it's a well-established old neighborhood. So, it's a, no three streets of any significance that I'm aware of. I share his gentleman's concern about the foot traffic and bike traffic, you know, in the street, and the need to try to help avoid a situation there.
Anyone else? Next order of business, please.
General Ordinance 7, 2017, meaning City Code, Chapter 2, Article 9, Section 2-117, Police Pension Fund.
Is there a petition to speak on this, please?
Council Eddie Felling, City Attorney. As you're all aware, some questions were brought up over the past several months with regard to the Police Pension Fund. While I was looking into that matter, one of the important things that came to my attention was the City Code section that references the Police Pension Fund and how those funds may be used. Unfortunately, the way it was, or the way it is currently written indicates the Police Pension Fund may be used extremely broadly, essentially for any police-related use whatsoever, that unfortunately or fortunately is absolutely not true. It's very specific, and Indiana Code sets forth exactly what those uses may be. What we've drafted before you is purely deleting the old language that had the broad proposed uses, and directly references the Indiana Code section that governs Police Pension Funds for this type of a fund. The main purpose of this is to help future administrations, again, what we do when we look for what uses can be made of particular funds, we look at the City Code first to see what you can do with the money. And if our first step is incorrect, we want to make sure that's corrected for, you know, future individuals that are looking into that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on General Ordinance 7, 2017? Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening, Counsel, my name's Noah Gamble, Attorney with Wagner Crawford Gamble &amp; Youngers, hired to represent the 1925 Police Pensioners. I have had, I wasn't expecting to be here this evening, so I'm kind of doing the best I can here. Mr. Felling and I had a conversation earlier today, and spoken with my clients since that time. We're hopeful that we can work with the city with regard to how the pension fund has been used over the years, as far as the accounting is concerned, which is the largest concern with my clients, and I brought that up at the last City Council meeting. Granted, that state law was changed in 2008, but how those pension funds were used and accounting of those funds before, leading up to 2008, and then after. The strongest concern, at least from my client's perspective, and I do have some information they'd like me to share with the council, some copies of things, is that, again, it's our understanding, reading state law, that the city fronts the money at this point and is reimbursed by the state, and that's the Cliff Notes version, that once property tax monies are, come in with regard to the city, that those monies be segregated into a separate account. Our interpretation of state law, and with regard to the use of those funds, that's a way to protect those monies on behalf of the pensioners. And then, once those monies are used, obviously, they'll be reimbursed by the state, but that's a way to, at least, that those monies aren't used for any other purpose other than on behalf of those 1925 pensioners. I do have some information, and I didn't make a copy of this, but I think I made note, mention of it the last City Council meeting, but there is a memorandum dated July 23, 2008, two city and town fiscal bodies, with regard to that implementation of the new law, and it was a question and answer. I'd be happy to make copies of that on behalf to the City Council, but also some information that my clients wanted me to give to the council. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Is there anyone else from the public that'd like to speak on General Ordinance 7, 2017?
Just briefly in response to that, if I may, Mr. President. I did speak with Mr. Gamble this afternoon, and we are looking forward to discussing, really digging into those financials to figure out what, if any, problems have occurred. Obviously, we've identified some already, and we put a stop to that, now it's about going back and really digging into the issue. So, over the next or upcoming weeks, we'll be working closely together to see what kind of a resolution we can get put together with regard to this matter.
Anybody else from the public that'd like to speak on this? Counsel? Counsel, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
That's all right, that's all right.
Go ahead, state your name and-
Ray Watts, 2208 Seaberry Avenue, retired as the Chief of Police, Terre Haute Police Department, 1995. Our biggest concern is that we want the council to be involved, for the simple reason is we don't feel we even need an ordinance, because the state law supersedes an ordinance. And I think the ordinance spells it out very clearly, that this money's supposed to be used for pensioners to pay them their benefits, not for hospitalization, and not for all the other things. And this is one of the reasons that we found out, the reason we're here is because we found out that we were $1 million in the hole. And I think it's very important, and we appreciate your time, but we do want you to look at this very strongly, because we want to solve this problem here. We don't want to have to go to the state or the federal to get this done. So, please look at this very strongly, and come up with the right approach. Thank you.
Hi, from the council? Hey, I just had a question, real quick. One of the things that I noticed about this ordinance was the, there's basically one line that we inserted into it, that we were just going to basically follow state code. How often do we, I guess that, I mean, I understand that we're not going to do it in the future, and I think that's great that we're having ordinance to make it so that we don't, but like Mr. Watts had just said, it seems kind of where that we're making an ordinance just to follow state law.
No, I understand. We reference Indiana Code all the time in our own city code. The funds generally, not every fund has a corresponding Indiana Code section. The council as a whole, when we create some of these funds, you all have the power to decide whether or not money can be used for certain reasons, in certain circumstances. One we just saw was on the Fire Prevention Code. We restricted the use of those funds, and there wasn't an overriding Indiana Code section that governed that. So what this does is helps clarify, as we go through our city code, we want it to be accurate, and the way it's written is inaccurate. The council at some point allotted for a use that wasn't allowed, and the reason why we're incorporating just the one-liner is because the code sections that is referenced is quite large, so we don't go in and copy and paste the whole thing. So again, it's changing a wrong in our code, making it right for the future.
Okay. And Councilman Elliott?
Yeah, Eddie, I had asked for a copy of that 368601, and my first conclusion was, it is quite long, and the way they write these, it's really hard for a-
Not the easiest thing to read.
-to read it and understand it. I think it would be a good idea if next week you could kind of summarize the important points-
Absolutely.
...that are in this for us, because I do see a couple of things that I kind of, kind of wonder about that maybe we haven't been following, you know, that are in here, but I'm not, I don't feel strong enough about that to bring it up myself.
Absolutely.
And the other question I have is, what is the time lag in the, when we pay out these benefits and the state reimburses us? How long of a-
That may be, I do know it's, we get it twice a year. The mayor may be able to answer that.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Mayor Dick Bennett. We just received a payment for last year, January 1st to June 30th. So we just got reimbursed for what we paid out 18 months ago, and so we will get another check in October for July 1st to December 31st.
Okay.
That's, they pay us in a very strange pattern.
It's as much as, 10 months plus, I guess as much as 18.
Yes, right. And all those funds are property tax dollars, and then we get reimbursed for those. There's no pension money that's sitting out there to be used, we get reimbursed for fronting that money. We divert it from the general fund, and that's been done that way since 2003 that we know of. And that's the system states created. And another piece that I learned recently from Umbel and Associates, we're only getting about 97% back, everybody. The state keeps some of it for administrative fees, and so you don't get 100% reimbursement for what you pay out. We'll always be making up a little bit of what we pay out.
Okay, and that, those numbers make sense, based on the schedule we had in the past. We received $2,289 in '16, we paid out $2,337 in '17.
Yeah, we're going to show you guys, we've got all the, we've gone back now to 2003, we're still checking the data, but we'll be able to show you how we've overpaid into that with property tax dollars. It's never enough to cover it. The pension money never covers the expense.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
My name is George Ralston, RAV, retired Chief of Police, City Terro. One thing I wanted to bring up was, when I was doing all this research on our pension money, and why it was in such a deficit, because of the incentives being taken out there, when I was talking to the State Board of Accounts, they informed me that this pension money cannot be commingled with the other money. It has to be separate. You cannot put it with the other money unless it's a separate account. And what happens is, is what they explained to me, if you put in, if you're commingled with other money, then who's to say the interest that you're getting off there to pay the life bill comes from the pension money? You see what I mean? It says that that money is strictly for pensions and nothing else. And this is what I wanted to bring up to you, that this is what they had told me, the guy with name was Todd Caldwell, a man I talked to at the State Board of Accounts, so that's all I had to say. Thanks, and thanks for listening to us, and thanks for taking, and Eddie Felling, for what he did for us too, I really appreciate it.
Mayor, do you have a response to that? Are you, does State Board of Accounts say that we can do that, or are we getting different opinions?
No, it's based on state law, but that wasn't something that, obviously, in 2003, when this started, it didn't start under my administration, it started in 2003, where they were paying for medical expenses. We just kept doing that. When I came into office in 2008, we continued to do that. And so, now that it's been brought to our attention, we corrected it beginning in June, so the only thing that will be coming out will be pension payments and death benefits, the things that are related to the financial part of it, that they get compensated for, and there'll still be a shortage. We'll still have to continue to put property tax dollars in there, because we won't get reimbursed at 100% of those expenses. All the healthcare costs are going to be shifted to police and fire budget, and then we'll have to take those property tax dollars that we were putting in the pension fund and shift them to police and fire to cover those expenses, because we are, those are legitimate expenses to be paid, but not out of the pension fund, the healthcare costs. And we started that in June, so from this point on, that won't be an issue.
So, I mean, when we talk about commingling and pulling, so we're not going to pull that-
It's a separate fund.
Okay.
It has a negative balance in it, because we haven't got any money this year. So of course, the fund's going to be negative, then when we got our reimbursement, when you look at the June financials, all of a sudden that deficit will become close to positive.
Now, I know you had said that it's a negative, and this has been going on since 2003, but were those funds always in the negative from 2003?
Different years they are, and some years they're positive.
Okay.
It just all depends how many expenses there were.
Okay, so the reason why we would go from a positive to a negative in that account is people dying, or what would be the reason?
No, we go negative, because beginning of the year, we pay out, pay out, pay out, and then we get reimbursed, so it gets negative, and a little bit more negative each month, until we get reimbursed. We don't have just a few million dollars to throw in there just to make it positive.
Well, I'm just trying to put myself in the retirees' shoes, I would think that they would think the reason why it's in a negative is because we're using it for other expenses that we shouldn't be using.
No, that is absolutely 100% untrue.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Yeah.
Councilman Garrison?
Not necessarily for you, Mayor. You know, a lot of times when we have issues that come before us, we, rather than repeat everything that the state says, we just say we pretty much honor what the state says, and when that changes, it also changes for us, and we don't have to keep bringing it back and revising it. But I think in this particular case, in my opinion, it seems like we should actually state what we want in there, that we don't want these funds intermingled, you know, if we want interest from these accounts to be used for this particular purpose, or for the retirees, that it should all be stated in there. And then regardless of what happens with the state laws or codes, and that doesn't change what we're wanting to do, which is make sure these funds are isolated and protected in the future, and then all funds and interest that's buried from that account. To me, something like that stated better than what I just said would be worth looking into.
But I would say that, you know, any of our funds could potentially have a negative balance at any time. This one's no different than any other fund when it comes to positive or negative balances.
Depending on what time of the year that is.
Exactly.
If you're paying it out, it will appear as negative.
And so, we're, and this, what is a little bit different about this is, is we have to front the money. We typically do that on the federal funds, and then this one. That's really the only ones we have to do that with.
Right, I understand that.
And so, you'd have to seed it, you'd have to plant money there, and leave it in order to even generate any interest that really ought to be going to the general fund if there was.
Or, you know, if we know for a fact that at a certain time of the year, when all the funds are to be repaid afterward, reimbursed, assuming that doesn't change, if it's December or whatever, that all funds are back to where it needs to be 100%, or, you know, some sort of draft of that type of language that could be in there, so that all that money is-
Well, what will happen is, it'll be negative at the end of the year if we don't put some money in it then, because when we get our disbursement in October, it'll be close, we'll use that up, and then we'll begin moving to the next year, so some point in there it gets negative until June.
Yeah.
It has to, there's no other way it can work.
All right. I'm just trying to help him figure out a way-
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
-that stays where it's supposed to be.
We would just have to put some money in there and always leave it there in order to keep it positive all the time, but that money would have to come from the general fund.
To build it up.
And in the past, and as you'll see when we give you the financial information, back in 2003, for some reason, they transferred $200,000 out of the general fund in there to supplement it. You know, I'm not sure why, but that was just a one-time thing that they had done. You'll see that on, when we get the financials to you, it's very detailed.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but let's say that it was all caught up, caught up where it should be at year end, or, you know, wherever we close this out for the year, how much money would actually be in that account, roughly?
At the end of the year, it might have a few hundred thousand, maybe, but then, by February, it would be gone, it would be negative again.
So the most that that account will have in one year, at any one time of that year, is 100,000?
Well, what, no, what you'll see is, like, we have a negative balance, you know, coming into June, when we get our disbursement. So let's say it was a million dollar negative balance, then we get a million three, or a million four, I don't know what the exact disbursement was, so there'd be a positive 300,000 or 400,000 there. But it's just on paper, you know, once again, it's just, you know, we have to fund that deficit, we have to fund those ahead of time. So it's not as easy as just, you know, and I hear exactly what you're saying, and any way we can do that to make it clear, I'm all for that, but this is a pretty unique fund, and when we take out these other expenses, then it'll, even if we just got reimbursed on a regular basis, we're still going to be short about 3%, so we'll have to put money in there, because we don't get reimbursed at 100%.
Right. But years ago, we didn't get reimbursed at all, right? We funded it completely in the beginning.
With property tax dollars, and then it switched.
Okay.
And when that's, when all those retirees eventually are not on the system anymore, we have to fund that all ourselves then. This is just for that particular plan. We will have to build into our budget all of this we're spending for future retirees, which we don't have to do today.
Something to keep in mind-
Because we won't get reimbursed, it'll be huge, it'll be huge.
Something to keep in mind for future contracts, I would expect.
Future revenue opportunities.
Councilman Elliott?
Yeah, I just want to summarize the numbers again here. So what we pay out in January, we don't get reimbursed till June of the following year. So at the end of every May, we've paid out 17 months' worth of those benefits that the state has not reimbursed us. And at $190,000 a month, that's over $3 million.
We have to front that money.
That's fronted, that's the worst situation we get. When we get to the end of June, we get six months of payments, so we're a year behind. When we get to December, we'd be a year behind again, so we're talking $2.3 million at a June 30 and a December 31 that we paid out, but the state owes us less than 3%.
And the fire department works exactly the same way, so the fire pension work, this, we double it, you're going to, times two.
That's, those are the numbers I was looking for.
So that's a, I mean, it's a, it's a significant amount of money we're talking about here.
Thank you. Do you want to comment?
Just one quickly, is that, I know that the general fund has a lot of funds within it, but however this fund is, this, the 1925 Pension Fund is actually, has specific statutes that govern how that, those pension funds need to be used, and how to protect those funds, and that they should not be used for any other purpose. So, this one, the 1925 Pension Fund though, is it's complete, it's a very unique animal. And the reason why is that those, in my interpretation of the statute, that the city has a fiduciary duty to pay those pension funds to pensioners, that those are earned funds, that they have earned for their service. And so, they're, what we are asking, and what we're going to hopefully work with the city on, and in talking to my clients, we think that there needs to be some amendments in there in order to protect the proposed city ordinance, to protect those funds, to- An option, and I'm just speaking off the cuff here, is that if it were in some sort of segregated fund, different, the interest earned could cover those 3% administrative costs that the city has to pay. I don't know. I'm just thinking off the top of my head. But the mayor is correct that, that the city, that the, the state only pays back a certain portion, and, but the city is responsible for the administrative costs. So, but hopefully, put our heads together and, and maybe we can work some, work on something so that we can safeguard those monies.
Thank you. Next order of business, Michelle, please.
I've got some else to say.
All right. Come on.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
All right. George Austin, Terre Haute. I think those funds that we had in our pension would be very solvent if that insurance money hadn't been taken out of there. There would have been a lot of money in there at one time. But, what did you say, Rick? How much money?
Seven million.
Seven million has been taken out of insurance benefits. It should never have been taken out. So, you look at seven million dollars that should have been in there, we wouldn't have a problem with this money being in our pension. But now the city's struggling to put money in it. And you understand me, why? Because of the misappropriation of taking insurance money out of there that should have never been taken out. And it was just by a fluke that we found out that that was even happening. And I think it's a good thing we did. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Mayor, would you like to respond to that?
There's no misappropriation of funds. That's, the city council approves the budget every year. That's been in there. You guys didn't know it either, and previous councils didn't know it. Apparently, the last two administrations didn't know it, or when the law changed, we didn't know it. So, there's no misappropriation. I, I don't, that term is implying that we did, done something illegally and on purpose. We misappropriated something. That's not the case at all. It was appropriated correctly. It just wasn't, we didn't follow the law on what you can spend it on or not. If you look at the expenditures for police, when I give you this data, you're going to find out that that's not the case, and there wouldn't be a whole bunch of money in there after these expenditures. It's very clear.
Well, I, I kind of have, want to take offense to the fact that you say that the council approves that budget. So, you were telling us that when we did the budget this last year, that we gave you permission to pay insurance benefits out of that?
No, I just say if you make a statement that it's misappropriated, that's not correct because it was properly appropriated. We're just not able to use for healthcare costs by state law, so it shouldn't have been in the budget, to be appropriated because it was appropriated.
Okay.
I'm just saying to use the term misappropriated means that we're doing something...
So, when they have a figure of $7 million, that's not true?
I, I don't know the exact figure because I know what it is by year, but you'll have that very same. When they, when Noah meets with Eddie, we should be able to have that wrapped up by tomorrow and first of the week. He'll be able to share that.
Okay.
We've got the exact figures.
We'll have that for next week.
And that's all been audited by the State Board of Accounts, so we know those are accurate figures.
So, we'll have that next week, Mayor?
Yep.
Okay.
Probably Monday.
All right.
For their meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Special Ordinance 27, 2017. Rezoning is properly located at 1225 North 8th Street. Favorable recommendation with conditions from area planning.
Is there a petitioner to speak on this, please?
Hello?
Hi.
Say your name and address for the other.
My name is Brad Bowe. I'm a business at 1245 North 8th Street, Blackburn Collision. And we, I had recently, or last year, bought the property beside us, and that was falling down, and we tore it down. And we're just continually to grow throughout the community. We just, business has been very gracious to us and everything. So, we're wanting to expand our building, and I'm wanting to get the, the property rezoned to commercial for the property that we had tore down. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 27, 2017? Counsel? I had a question. Will there be any more at a body shop? I always hear fumes for paint stuff. Is this going to add to that by having that?
The, my painting facility is, is standing where it's at. It's, it's been there since the building was built. That, Blackburn's have been there since 1960. So, I mean, there's always been painting done there. Obviously, business has grown. There's, there's more painting. But I think it was in 2005 is when they built the new facility. I bought it in 2010. So, the paint booths are the same place. They haven't moved, nor are they going to move. The new building is just going to be for bodywork and reassembly of vehicles. We have started working on RVs, doing, there's no facilities that do that for the body. So, we're looking at doing that so that we can have areas to pull them in because they get quite large. It's kind of hard to pull them in, some of the doors that we have now and so, but it's mainly going to be just for body and reassembly.
All right. So, you're not moving any painting closer to the residential houses?
No. No, because it's all in paint booths, you know, it's, chimneys go through the building. You know, I got one, one that goes through the center of the building and one on the outside for both booths. Both booths that I do, I have, which I have the paperwork if you want to see it. The EPA highly regulates everything that I do. You know, I, they require 98% efficient filters for exhaust, and I use, mine are rated at 99.3 or 0.3%. So, it's actually a notch above what the EPA recommends and, or requires. And I do get visited by them, you know, and I have to have this paperwork, you know, for them to show and prove that this is what I'm buying for it. But no, they're, the painting is standing. It, it cost me, you know, a fortune to move all that and disassemble the booths and concrete and everything, so.
Okay. That's all I have. Any other questions? Thank you. Next order of business, Michelle, please.
Special Ordinance 30, 2017. Vacating a portion of a north-south public alley located between 622 through 650 Lafayette Avenue and 921 through 1017 North 6th Street. A problem was noted in the documents in front of you. Give me one second. Engineering stated vacating this alley would extend, I'm sorry, would create a dead-end alley. The developer has proposed dedicating an alley to 6th Street to provide full access. The dedication of this proposed alley needs to be part of this ordinance or a condition of approval.
Thank you. Petitioner to speak on this, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jeff Llewellyn. I'm an attorney with the Wilkinson Gola Law Firm here in Terre Haute, appearing on behalf of the petitioner, Vermillion Development, who are joined with Indiana State University and H&amp;H Realty. We were here back in April, May timeframe, seeking to rezone the property that borders the alleyway that we're now seeking to vacate. The property was rezoned to allow for the future development of an assisted living facility for seniors with disabilities, about a $20 million project. And at that time, I did have with me a proposed rendition of site plan for this property, and I'm going to refer back to that this evening for purposes of the alleyway vacation that we're seeking. And it might be a little confusing, but I'll try and paint the picture so that you understand what we're asking for specifically. And then as well, I'm going to give you, I guess I'll say I'm giving you, but you have options here is, is the intent. If we start on the north side, Second Avenue is the north end of the north-south alleyway that we're talking about, located with North 6th Street to the west and Lafayette Avenue to the east. But as you move south down the alleyway from Second Avenue, approximately, I'm going to say 150 feet, you will find that there is a, another alleyway that runs partially east-west. It, it will turn to the east and run toward Lafayette Avenue, but dead ends before it ever gets to Lafayette Avenue. So, with regard to the comment that we're creating an alley with a dead end, we already have that condition that exists, and we're not proposing to touch or change that in any way. Vermillion Development does not own the property on the north end that we're talking about, and, and we're not proposing to vacate that alleyway. And in fact, the alley that runs toward the east, toward Lafayette Avenue, there is a home that sits on the north end of this block that has a garage that accesses off this east-west alleyway. So, if we took that away, they wouldn't have access to their garage, and that's not our intent at all. But we do want to start at a point that is approximately 175 feet, we'll say, south of Second Avenue, which would be the north line of our property. And then vacate from that point south. So, admittedly, there will be somewhat of a dead end from Second Street to the north property line that we have, but you have the east-west alleyway that comes down, and apparently, if it's used, it's used in the manner of coming down and, and exiting, you could exit, I guess, either way, north or south. If we vacate, they still have the exit to the north. Trash pickup, I believe, takes place on the street of Second Avenue, so that shouldn't be interrupted. But even if it is picked up from the back of that garage location, it would still have the same ability to do that. So, we're not disrupting any public or utility or trash removal service in that way. So, then as we head south through our alleyway, we're asking to vacate approximately 370 feet of the north-south alley to get to the south line of our property address for the development purposes. And again, then as the alley continues south to meet up with Locust Avenue. So, admittedly, there would be another dead end on the south side. If you came off of Locust heading north to the alley, you would hit our south property line, and it would dead end. The legal description that I gave you for vacation purposes wholly includes our lot only. But Indiana State University owns all but one of the remaining lots on the south end of this block. And I went ahead and noticed the property owner of the one property. It's, I believe the address is 60915 North 6th Street. It's owned by an Alan Maraska, I believe is how it's pronounced. So, I went ahead and gave notice to them in the event that they want to address this and/or if the city wanted to look at vacating the southern portion of that alley all the way down to Locust Street. I know when we talked about the project in the beginning, we looked at the fact that where this alley joins up with Locust Street, you can see is very near the intersection of Locust Street and Lafayette Avenue. It kind of creates a five-point situation, if you will. There's no traffic signals whatsoever, no stop signs whatsoever. And the alleyway itself is very minimal, I guess I'll say. It's, it's not kept up. It appears that it would be very minimally traveled if, if, if at all. And again, on the south end, there is only one home here, and their trash service is off of North 6th Street. So, there's no traffic or trash pickup up and down the north-south alley for servicing of that property. So, in my opinion, and I don't, I don't get a vote, so it doesn't matter, but in my opinion, that alleyway on the south end would seem to make sense to vacate as well while we are doing this. And Indiana State, again, being a boarding, bordering property owner of that alley, you have the authority to do that as they're the petitioner here tonight for the middle portion. But ultimately, that may, that decision that the council will make, and maybe engineering has thoughts on that, I don't know, whether they agree it's safe or unsafe or should or should not be done. But I believe you have the ability to do that ultimately. And so, that's why I wanted to set it up that way and, and give the property owners notice and an opportunity to be heard if they have an objection to that as well. I've not been contacted by anyone in regard to the petition. I don't know whether you have or not. But with that said, we're looking for your approval, passage of special ordinance to vacate specifically at least the alleyway as it runs through our property, which would then allow the development to go forward as we previously rezoned the property. And with that, I would take any questions.
Mr. President, I just want to clarify, the legal notice was sent out exactly as it stated here. So, the alley to be vacated is bordered by 622 through 650 Lafayette and 921 through 1017 North 6th Street. It does not, the legal notice did not extend it to Locust.
Right. Thank you. Well, and I think that was where the, maybe you said the problem was? Is that with the legal description?
I went to engineering, and I think, hopefully, Mr. Innes can speak to this. I spoke to Larry Robbins because the legal description, I had some concerns with in the documents that vacating an alley not owned by petitioner is one. And this was an interesting legal description. That gave me a lot of fits. And so, the advertisement was sent in just for that section, not for the entire alley. So, it's not extended to the north, and it only covers the middle section of the alley.
Correct. And, and it, it is a lengthy description because all of the parcels on the plot or plat that we are proposing to develop, I think there are 20 different parcels there. So, you've got 20 different pieces described on the east side and on the west side of the alley. So, that's what makes it more lengthy. And, and yes, the common addresses that I did list for the description purposes, again, were simply those parcels and common addresses that we are seeking for development purposes. So, I wanted to be clear. That's, I guess I'll say, the, the, the maximum or minimum that we want as far as a vacation. I simply tried to state in the petition as well that the alley runs further south all the way to Locust Street. And notice the property owner who is along that south side. And as I said, Indiana State University owns every other parcel of ground along this alleyway with the exception of that one owner. So, they could join in that petition and consent to extending it, I think, if, if that were what the council chose to do. So, my intent was, was really to try and give the city some option here as to how it would vacate as opposed to simply saying, we just want to vacate out of the middle and, and that's it, and leave you with two unvacated portions of alleys on north and south ends.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance 30, 2017? Counsel?
President?
Councilwoman Crossen?
Yes, thank you. So, I just want to make sure I understand, if nothing is done to amend this ordinance as it stands now, we, we would be voting on vacating only that portion of the alley that is in your development?
Middle. Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Councilman Garrison?
Jeff, using that map, could you hold that up again?
Sure.
And I'm trying to look, trying to envision this in a few years when this is built, and then we've got the property on the south end, you said that is partially owned by ISU. Do you know if there's any plans to be developed in that area?
I, I do not. I do not know what, what future plans would be.
What would you say is the front of your development? Is it face Lafayette?
On Lafayette, facing Lafayette, yes. And there are entrances proposed off of Lafayette Avenue for traffic.
Entrance for, for automobiles to pull in?
Yes. Yes. Actually, two, one on the north end and one on the south end for traffic flow and parking through our property side and then back out onto Lafayette.
Okay. I was just curious. I wasn't sure how that worked. Thank you. I yield.
Yes. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next order of business, please.
Special Ordinance 31, 2017. Special ordinance thirty-one-two thousand seventeen, vacating a portion of a north-south public alley located between four-thirty-one North Fourteenth Street and four-thirty North Fourteenth and a half Street. No problems were noted, other than that this would continue a dead-end alley, but there is an existing dead-end alley there now.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm here tonight representing the petitioner regarding this request to vacate the property, or the alley. Not only are we attempting to vacate the alley, we're also asking tonight, in a later matter, to rezone this property in two. But as, as stated, this is a dead-end alley. Other portions that go north and then west have already been vacated. For whatever reason, this small piece has not. It only abuts one other property owner, and doesn't affect that property owner at all because, as stated, this dead-end alley, they all go south. We sent out notices. A local representative of the Archdiocese, the petitioner, was contacted, not by the abutting landowner, but by another one. I think there was some misunderstanding that we were going to try to open the alley back up, but in reality, we're trying to close that portion. They had some concerns that we're going to open it up and there'd be more traffic, but that is not the case. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this request to vacate this alley.
Is anyone from the public that'd like to speak on special ordinance thirty-one-two thousand seventeen? Counsel? Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Special ordinance thirty-two-two thousand seventeen, rezoning a property located at four-thirty North Fourteenth and a half Street and a portion of vacated alley west of four-thirty North Fourteenth and a half Street. Area planning given favorable with conditions recommendation.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm here tonight representing the petitioner, the Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Indianapolis Properties Incorporated. They own this piece and properties in the north. This is going to be the future site of the Catholic Charities Food Bank. And as I'm sure most of you are aware, this food bank is going to serve the seven surrounding counties and provide thousands or tens of thousands of meals per year, and serve approximately forty-three thousand people in this, in this area. This piece abuts obviously the rest of the property that's all already rezoned in two. This piece, however, for whatever reason, is owned R-three. The previous owner used this for parking, for their employee parking. It is the current, or the petition this evening, it's their intention to use it for employee parking as well. They, they plan to follow the city code as far as the, the hard surface requirement, as well as the buff, or the fencing to provide some barrier between the residential and the, and the, and the industrial. One of the conditions, this, the petitioner has also filed for a variance for the distance, and that was one of the conditions of the rezoning. But as stated, this received favorable at that stage, and tonight, we're just asking for this to be rezoned in two from the current R-three zoning classification. I'd be happy to answer your questions, may I?
Is anyone from the public that'd like to speak on special ordinance thirty-two-two thousand seventeen? Counsel? Thanks, Mr. Shagley.
Thank you.
Next order of business, please.
Resolution eleven-two thousand seventeen, authorizing the extension of a temporary revolving loan from redevelopment.
Petitioners speak on this, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Dick Bennett, I would refer you to the document I handed out to you when we started the meeting, several pages here. First page is just basically a summary, and explains what the attachments are. So the purpose of this resolution is to extend the loan. You know, originally, we had wanted to do it for the entire year. Council made the determination to amend that resolution to have it paid back in August, and also some other caveats as related to reestablishing individual bank accounts for the redevelopment funds, which all that was accomplished and, and done. So the, this particular resolution is to continue the loan on until December to be paid back. And so the first attachment that I have, if you flip the page there, and it's A, it's marked down in the corner, will give you the summary of our cash pool analysis for the remainder of the year, from basically July first through December thirty-first. This first one shows you paying the loan back in August, if you look in the second column, and then what happens with our cash pool balances if we pay that back and we don't extend the loan. So kind of like what, when I presented before, a couple of different scenarios for you. So if you look at this, in September, then, we would have a negative balance in our cash pool if we did not renew the loan. We paid it back in August, and we did not renew the loan. The next page then shows you extending that loan on out. So obviously, in August, it would be a wash, paying it back, taking it out again, but you can follow along, and you can compare the two sheets then of what happens with the cash balances of pool with that five million dollar loan in place, and then what it looks like at December thirty-first, at the end of the year, when the TAW and the redevelopment loan are both paid back. So I don't know if you have any questions on those two, and you can kind of absorb it and bring those questions next week, too, but this is the same format we used earlier in the year. It just had twelve months on it, where now we're looking at six months. So starting balance and ending balance of the cash pool for each of those months. The third sheet is a little bit more detailed, obviously, but what we had done last time was provide you with all of redevelopment. Well, all we're doing now is providing more detail for the two funds that we borrowed the money from. The first, the top half of the paper is State Road Forty-six TIF, and then the bottom half of the paper is the Central Business District TIF. So if we'll just look at the first column and walk through that briefly, the cash pool beginning fund balance on January first was two-point-nine, three-nine, five-seventy-one, eighty-one. You'll see that first number up there. And then they had expenditures of eleven thousand dollars, and so their ending balance of their cash pool, we use that term for them, but this is an individual cash pool of an account, left them with a two-point-nine to a million-dollar balance. So if you work your way through this, we've been updated all projects, if you look in that project section, and updated some numbers as of yesterday. Phil and Steve both worked with me to provide some additional things that were going to happen the rest of this year, some increased dollars in some areas. So if you work your way across the bottom of the balance sheet cash, you can see what their cash account balance is all throughout this period of time. And so they're spending some funds, obviously, out of this particular State Road Forty-six, it's going to go from two-point-nine to one-point-three after we pay back the five-hundred-thousand dollars that's borrowed out of there. But it includes all of their projects and all of their other expenses for personnel supplies, and so everything is in here. We just expanded this particular spreadsheet. And then, of course, in the bottom half is the Central Business District TIF, and as you can see, with us borrowing the four, four-point-five million, it looks like their lowest month would be in May, it was already in May, and then their next lowest month would be in November of nine-hundred-and-four thousand. So even with us borrowing that money, them having all of the expenses covered, all the projects covered, with some, we actually beefed it up a little bit and gave them a little cushion, they still have a million dollars of reserves that are not targeted for anything, just an extra balance in this account. And of course, they'll end the year with six million dollars. They'll get another disbursement in December, so they'll end up with six million dollars in the bank at December thirty-first. So that's just more detailed than what we did the first time, thought it would be important just to focus on those two, since those are in separate accounts, separate bank accounts, fund, or managed separately, and we were able to get some updated information from them that's as current as, as yesterday. So what I'm asking for is an extension of this loan to the end of the year to be paid back in December, when we get our tax disbursement at the end of December. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is anyone from the public that'd like to speak on resolution eleven-two thousand Counsel? Counselwoman Elliott?
Mayor, on sheet, sheet B, the cash flow ending balance, November thirty, two-thirty and one forty-one, Brad, can you explain that one?
Yeah, well, we do not have, there's two things that we do. This time, I used a hundred percent spend on, we didn't, you remember last time, we used the term deferred spending or whatever, there were some things at the beginning of the year that we could not do, but I went ahead and had them calculate out at a hundred percent spend for our, all of our expenses for the general fund. And then we will not get any money until December through property tax, but we will likely get an early disbursement, so it's likely for that number to change. If we were to get an early disbursement of property taxes in November of two million dollars, let's say, and then with the other dollars that we won't spend out of the general fund, that'll actually be positive. But I just went ahead and played it out as worst-case scenario. Does that make sense?
Mayor, I have a question. Regarding your cash flow analysis, do you have, do you think next week you can bring the cash analysis that you gave us for when we discussed this in February?
Well, this is the same thing.
It's the same numbers?
Well, not, these are actuals through June.
Okay, I'm talking from July to the end of the year. How do they compare to what you gave us in February? Because in February, you gave us for the full year, for the full twelve months. So how does these figures that you gave us tonight compare?
They're very similar. I'm sure they're off a little bit. I mean, when you're talking about, you know, thirty-three million dollars worth of expenses, we're probably a few hundred thousand off on certain months, or payments maybe were made one month we hadn't planned on and were made the next when we put that together back in February, but...
Could you bring, could you give us, I'm sure the council couldn't get it, but if you could bring those next week so we can compare?
So you want to know, well, I mean, you, and all of you, as you get your, you know, monthly general fund expenses, I mean, that's the number. And so tomorrow, you'll get May, and so you have, you'll have, already have the first five months of the actuals.
Right. But I'm just curious how they change, if they have, from the final six months of the year? The figures that you gave us today for the, from July to the end of the year, are they the same?
So you only want to see if what our projections now are the same as what we projected in February?
Correct.
Okay. So you only want July on?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. We can do that. I think it's very close.
Okay.
Yeah.
By any other? Counselwoman Crossen.
I realize we, we, by next week, we will not have passed a budget for the following year, but do you anticipate that for two thousand eighteen, we'll be asking again for a temporary redevelopment loan?
Yes, I'm just not sure how, and that was my last point, my last bullet on the cover sheet there, that in December, we'll decide what that amount needs to be and what the duration may need to be. I can't answer that today of how much, because we will try to do everything we can. My preference would be to reduce the TAW, so we don't have to pay any interest before we get into the redevelopment loan. So we'll just, we'll work on cash flows to the end of the year, and as we put the budget together, that'll kind of become much clearer. Today, I know we'll need one, but I don't know how much or the duration yet.
I understand the issue of the interest and that being a benefit overall to the city to not be paying that, but I also understand that these monies in these TIF districts were generated for work in those TIF districts, continuing to borrow from them to pay the general fund matters, and we're not doing the work in those TIF districts that, you know, that it might, that might be done, as intended. So I continue to have a concern about that, but, so that's why I wanted to clear up that question.
Well, and all I would say is, is whatever projects they put in there, that will reduce that opportunity to be able to borrow, and that's fine, we understand that, and they've still got a couple of million dollars to work with, so it'd have to be pretty significant. And then the timing of that is, as, for example, this year, you really can't spend a whole lot more money that you haven't already planned to spend, because there's usually at least a six-to-nine-month lead time to design, bid, and do the project. So we feel really good about this year, when they put the two thousand eighteen budget together, if that reduces the amount we can borrow, then we, I mean, absolutely, we'll do that. They'll be able to do everything they need to do.
I just want to follow up on a point that Counselwoman Crossen made. You had said you were going to give us the figures of what you're going to borrow in December for two thousand eighteen?
Right. We'll bring a resolution in December.
Will you be able to give us those figures when we're doing the budget? I would think we would need to know those figures.
I think we can ballpark it. I mean, I, I'll know more, and when you approve the budget in late October, we're going to know a lot more than what we do today.
So you'll be able to give us a figure when we're doing the budget?
We'll be able to stick a number out there, but I mean, give or take a little bit, maybe we can lower it.
Okay.
Probably the max number, I would say, definitely would know.
All right.
Yep.
Any else? Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you.
Mr. President, just a reminder, there will be a special call meeting next Thursday at five-thirty. I'll be sending notices out Monday.
You want to remind everybody what that's for?
Thank you.
You can.
It's a presentation by...
Mary Kramer, Art Spaces.
Thank you.
May I adjourn?
Go ahead.
Just one further thing. I know it's not related, but UMBR is preparing their financial analysis for us, and we'll be able to have that presented in August, so it's kind of a perfect timing, where we'll have the budget submitted, first draft of the budget, obviously, to be considered by the council in September, will be introduced at the August meeting, but at that second August meeting, UMBR will be here to do their presentation of their financial analysis for the next five years.
And, and I know you told us when we would get the May financials, but we'll have June financials by the time UMBR gives their presentation?
Well, in about thirty days, so, you know, we just closed the month out, so it'll take us probably two, you know, three to four weeks to complete that, especially with Leslie being gone for another month.
Okay.
But yeah, tomorrow, I, I should have the May financials, I'm going to, supposed to get them first thing in the morning to review, and we'll get them out to you tomorrow.
Thank you. Bye, Danny.
May I adjourn?
It's been moved to adjourn by Counselwoman Ollers, second by Counselwoman Crossen. Ollers, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.